You're last in the door, you get to watch him, everybody gets to watch you get ready, so sorry for that, but welcome, and we will call to order the school board meeting for the District of Milton for Monday, February 13th. And we have a special guest with us tonight. And as you know, we always start our readings with the Pledge of Allegiance. I typically start that, but I'm going to defer and would like to welcome Clayton Hudson, 2417. You can do it from right where you're at, and we would be happy to have you lead us in our pledge.
Please join me on that. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome Clayton and your guests. Mr. Donovan, are you aware of any changes to our agenda?
No changes to the agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. Thank you. Motion from Jennifer, seconded by Rick, to approve our agenda as we have it. Questions? All in favor of approval signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion is passed. Action on our minutes is next.
I make a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting held on January 23rd, 2023.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Motion by Rick, seconded by Dave, to approve the minutes from our previous meeting. Does anyone have questions on the minutes? I hear none. All in favor of approval, approving the minutes, signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you. The minutes are approved. And next, as always, is vouchers.
I would move to approve general checking income vouchers totaling $785,858.53 as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Dave, seconded by Mike, to approve our checking vouchers in the amount he just enumerated. Any questions on the vouchers? All in favor of approval signify with aye, please.
Aye.
And opposed? Our vouchers are approved. Student Council report, looks like Holly is joining us, welcome.
Hello, Student Council has just finished creating their Teacher of the Year and is working on planning from as well as possible ways to put them in there. Student Council is also looking at the possible ways to increase student enrollment next year. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Holly. Next is public comment, and when I checked, I had no one signed up. Rich, would you double check, please?
No one's signed up.
No one has signed up, so we will roll past that. And that would be Rich himself with the superintendent update, Red Hawk Highlights.
Yeah, still have Red Hawk Highlights, a couple of things that I want to highlight that are happening with our students across our district. And I'll read with some athletics. We have one member of our swim team that's qualified for the state swim competition that's coming up on Friday, Gavin Bartlett. And the boys wrestling team won the conference championship, and then there's five wrestlers that qualified for regionals, or five that won their weight class at the regionals. Ten wrestlers have qualified for sections that are coming up this Saturday. So it seems like winter sports just kind of got rolling, but we're already at a point where things are winding down a little bit for winter sports. And then in some academics and different groups, we have the FPLA, Future Business Leaders of America, did a miracle moment fundraising event that raised $470 for March Dimes. And they have their regional competition, and there are a large number of them that qualified for the state tournament that's coming up in April, so we'll give a little bit more in-depth update on that when we get closer to that state tournament. Milton High School Financial Literacy Team, for the third year in a row, the team won the Financial Literacy Bowl Challenge, and team number one of those teams is moving onto the state competition in May. So again, there as we get closer to that, we'll give a more in-depth update. And the last thing is the middle school cereal box domino drive. The Milton Middle School Avid Team participated in, I gotta make sure I get this name right, the Do Good Wisconsin Cereal Box Domino Challenge. So that's kind of a muckle, but students, yeah, and community members brought in cereal boxes to create a cereal box domino chain throughout the school, and it's scheduled for February 20th. Keep an eye out for videos on that, and then the food boxes are donated to the Milton Food Pantry.
Very good. Any questions for Rich on Red Hawk Highlights? We'll stay with Rich. Part B of his superintendent is a bit of an operational referendum update.
Yeah, there's a couple of different things that we want to highlight, and if you recall, the last board meeting in January, the board approved bringing an operating referendum to the voters this April. Charlie, I'm going to start by opening up the information sessions tab. So one of the highlights for the board and the community that we've had and are continuing to have a large number of informational sessions, I've spent the last week and a half doing a lot of presentations for staff so that our employees have information about the upcoming referendum. And we have some coming up for parent groups at the different schools and for community-wide events. I think the two that I'd really like to make sure we highlight are a week from today at Milton High School in the Library and Media Center on February 20th at 6:30. I don't know if that's open to any community members to get information about the referendum. And then the following day on Tuesday, February 21st, we're doing an information session at Harton Elementary School. A large number of our students, families, community members that live down in that area, so we wanted to make sure we had an opportunity to get information out to them. You can see here all the other sessions that are coming up that myself and board members will be taking part in. Then we'll open up the operational referendum information sheet. This document is two pages, and it contains some highlights and information on the upcoming referendum. Hard copies of that are at the table here, if anyone in the audience would like to take one of those with them, they can pick one up. And some are, or all of the information on this is going to be shared in the presentation that I'll be doing right now. So we'll open up that presentation slide. And as I shared, the board approved an operational referendum, the election day is Tuesday, April 4th. And it's important that folks have accurate information about the upcoming referendum. Our job as a school district is to make sure that we provide education and information about this so that voters can make an informed decision. And our school district is very much an essential part of our community. We have outstanding student achievement, great opportunities, both academic and extracurricular opportunities for our students, a high-quality staff, and we also have a history as fiscal stewards of our taxpayers' money, and we're one of the largest employers in our school district. So there's a lot of things that make us an outstanding school district. I want to highlight a few things that the board and the finance committee has talked about, and board and finance committee members chime in if there's things that you want to add or questions that you have as we go through this. But the slide here kind of talks to the history of funding from the state of Wisconsin. And you can see that, starting in 1995 and going through about 2008, there was a period of time where there were steady increases in the revenue limit per pupil adjustment, and that allowed school districts to have predictable funding from the state that kept pace fairly well with inflation and allowed some long-term planning by school districts. And then you'll see that in 2009 and 2010, that trend of increasing amounts fell off and had decreasing amounts. And then in 2011, you can see the significant decrease in the revenue limit per pupil adjustment. And since that time, there either have been years where there's been known increases or there's been fairly small increases since that time. What's happened then because of that, especially with six of the last eight years not having any adjustment to the per pupil revenue limit, as inflationary costs have taken off, it's really created what you refer to as a fiscal cliff for school districts. And on the next slide, it highlights that with years of ill taxpayers. If you remember that initial slide, the state had that consistent funding increases. Once that model has changed, it's really created a system in the state where local taxpayers are doing more of the funding, having more responsibility for the funding, both in our district and across the state. To highlight that, in the past year, there have been 92 school districts in Wisconsin that have pursued an operational referendum, with 76 of those receiving voter approval. And this coming April, along with us, there are a total of 52 school districts that are pursuing an operational referendum this coming April. So a very significant number of school districts across the state either have recently put something in place or are looking at doing that to address the funding concerns that are coming out of the state.
And Rich, just kind of piggybacking on that, I mean, if you look at the 52 and the 92, there's about 420 districts in the state, so between November to April, a third or a third of the school districts are going to referendum on the same question. And so if it were up to me, I'd put that first chart in the newspaper and show that six of the last eight years with no new funding, and then put this in there saying, hey, this is a third of the school districts in the state in the last six months are going to referendum for the same question because the state's funding model is unsustainable and not particularly viable for the state. So I just wanted to put it in context of what percentage it is, but again, it's over a third.
And even beyond that, the districts that either haven't or aren't bringing that to voters this April, there's a significant number of districts that are having conversations about how to get by for another year and then bringing something to the voters in April of '24. So that's over a third, or more than 33%, is going to even go up more in the next election. And what that really has done is created a system of haves and have-nots among school districts. Districts that are able to supplement the state funding with additional local funding are able to have revenues available that other districts who either haven't had a successful referendum or are considering bringing those don't have that revenue available. The next two slides speak to that topic, and the two slides are very similar, so I'll describe them and then look a little more closely at these two. This first one is for all of the schools in the Badger Conference, and it's measuring the total revenue per member. That's revenue that's coming from all different sources. It's from local property taxes, from the federal government, from the state, and from local non-tax sources, although that last one is a pretty small portion of our district and every district's budget. But what we can see there in comparison with all the other school districts in the Badger Conference is that our school district on the far right has the lowest revenue per member, and this is from the '21-'22 school year, but ours is $14,300, or a shade over that. You can see the average of the districts in the Badger Conference is $15,783, and the state average is $16,972. So when you look at that on a permanent basis, you can see that our school district doesn't have the resources that other school districts have. If we go to the next slide, it's the same comparison with Rock County Schools, and you'll notice that these are our surrounding districts or other districts that are in Rock County. Again, our average is $14,342, and the state average is $16,972. But the Rock County average is pretty similar to the Badger Conference, the Rock County is $15,718. And again, when you look at that difference and multiply by the number, by our membership, it's a pretty significant amount of funding that other districts have that we don't have And because we have lower revenue per member than these other districts, we've had to be very responsible fiscal stewards. With that history of inadequate state funding, we've provided for a high-quality education for our students, but we've had to do it in as efficient a manner as possible. And this slide highlights some different things that we've done over the past few years. Some of them are things that have come to the board for board approval, some are things that we implemented just through our own staff and our admin team, but I'll highlight some of those. By moving 4K into our schools, we've reduced rent costs and also provided a better educational environment for our students. We've saved transportation costs by implementing a more efficient transportation system. We reduced both the school and apartment budgets the last two years in anticipation of the lack of state funding. We do an annual alignment of staff to student enrollment, so we're making adjustments as our enrollment changes. And we, over the last couple of years, we redesigned our teacher compensation model, and we made adjustments to employee benefits because we have to both remain competitive and improve sustainability. When we talk about remaining competitive, it's, I don't know that there's ever been a time in education where there's been more competition for employees than there is now, whether it's teachers, administrators, food service staff, building ground staff, support staff, all of those positions, there's more competition than there's ever been. So in order for us to attract and retain high-quality staff, we need to offer salaries and benefits that compare to other districts both in our area and around the state, and we've worked hard to do that, but we also have to do it within the resources that we have available. So when we talk about improving sustainability, it means making changes so that we can live within our means. The fiscal challenges that we have, whether they're from frozen revenue limits or increased inflationary costs for all of the different things that we spend money on, have made it difficult to balance the budget. And moving forward, balancing the budget is going to require either new revenue or significant spending reductions. Board members and many of our staff have seen me use my arms to show frozen revenue and increasing expenses, and you get a shortfall there. Maybe a better way to display that that doesn't involve my arms is on the screen here. You can see the blue line represents our projected revenues for the coming years, and the red line are projected expenses, and it's kind of small printed underneath, but underneath it talks about the revenue limit projection, so the red line assumes $125 increase in per pupil adjustment and level future enrollment. So we talked earlier about the state's responsibility in funding schools. We know that over the past 10 years or so, the state hasn't come close to an average of $125 per member or per pupil, but with a significant fund balance at the state level, we're hopeful. And using $125, you get new money each year from the state in our projections. Even with that additional new money from the state, listed here are our projected shortfalls into the coming years. So for next year, a $2.7 million shortfall. The following year, it increases to over $4 million. The year after that, to $5.24 million. And then in the '26-'27 year, you'll see that revenues decreased pretty substantially, and that's when the last year of our current $2.5 million non-recurring referendum expires. So not only does it stay steady, but in that last year that's displayed, $2.5 million of our budget revenue would expire, it wouldn't be there anymore and create an even more significant gap. When there are shortfalls like that, in order to have a balanced budget, one of two things has to happen. Either new revenue, so the board has brought the ballot item to the voters to bring in additional revenue, or significant spending reduction. So if there isn't new revenue that comes in, in order to balance the budget, we need to make significant spending reductions. Large-scale spending reductions like this, in the biggest part, are people. We know that 75% to 80% of our budget and most school districts' budgets are spent on people, on salaries, benefits for our employees. And so if we're going to make significant reductions, it means fewer people, which means we get the work done with, and you can hear the phrase, "do more with less", we're kind of at a point where we won't be able to do as much as we have with this much less. It would be larger class sizes, obviously, and if we have fewer people, we put more students into each classroom. It would mean fewer academic opportunities for students. We're proud of the wide range of courses that we offer for students at the high school. We would need to look at, if we have fewer people, we aren't able to offer all of those options. We also have a large number of both fine arts and athletics, extracurricular opportunities for students. Making significant reductions like this would mean fewer of those opportunities for students. Over the past few months, the boards had a lot of discussion about different referendum options. There was discussion about recurring versus non-recurring referendums, whether to have one-time or multiple-year increments if there was a referendum, and whether to have a same or consistent net tax impact or varied tax impacts over the years. And those bullet points on the right are some places in discussion that the finance committee and the board talked about, the importance of having long-term sustainable revenues and resources. Non-recurring referendums don't provide long-term solutions, they provide a way to meet short-term needs. The board talked about whether to enhance our current educational programs or maintain them, and landed on referendum amount that would allow us to maintain the programs that we have in place but not enhance or add to them. It was important to the board to have a gradual impact on the year-to-year tax levy, so the plan in place has that, and we'll look at that in just a moment. Our district mill rate is the tax rate per $1,000 in equalized value for homes, and having a gradual impact on a year-to-year tax levy and keeping that mill rate within our historical range were things that were important. And then maintaining or targeting that fund balance of between 20% and 25% of our expenses. And there's a number of reasons why keeping a fund balance that size is important for school districts. It affects our bond rating, allows us to address one-time needs if they come up, it also reduces the need for short-term borrowing when revenue from the state comes in at different times than our expenses come in. So taking all of that into account, the school board approved bringing an opportunity for voters to make a decision on a recurring referendum. If approved, it would gradually increase the district's operational resources by a total of $9.5 million over four years to protect our high-quality programs and services, retain, attract, and remain competitive with the best educators and staff. And although it's asking for $9.5 million over four years, it's extremely important to note that the net levy increase would be $1 million per year for the next four years. And the next slide kind of displays why that's the case. On this, the first bar in this diagram is the current year, and the height of the bar represents our total tax levy authority. And then the following years are projections based on the referendum, if the referendum were to pass. And two things that I want to point out, in the green, where it says $2.5 million, that's our current non-recurring referendum, so you can see that's in place for this year and for the next three years, we have $2.5 million in operating funds. But in the fourth year, in '26-'27, that sunsets. The other thing that I want to point out is in the yellow is the $3 million one-time debt deficience or debt prepayment that the board approved to pay down debt that, in the long term, saves our school district and our taxpayers about $1.4 million in future interest payments. So this current year's levy is between $21 and $22 million. It's a bit below $22 million, and you can see that in the height of that bar. In the referendum, it asks for $4 million increase in the operating expenses or operating revenue for the '23-'24 year, that's offset by the $3 million falling off of the levy, so the net increase on the levy would be an additional $1 million. So if we started, go back to $22 million, it would be asking the voters for $23 million in '23-'24, and then an additional $1 million in '24-'25, and again, '25-'26. And then in '26-'27, the $2.5 million referendum expires, and if the referendum is, if the current referendum is approved, it would be replaced by $3.5 million, so the net impact on the levy for that year would also be a million dollars. So each of the four years from '23-'24 through '26-'27 would see a $1 million increase in the tax levy authority. And the word authority is an important part of that because the board has the authority to adopt a levy up to that amount. If the state made changes in their past history and provided more than the $125 that we're using in our projections, the school board could make a decision to levy a lesser amount than that amount. So if the board go, if the referendum passes, we'd have the authority to levy up to that amount. On the next slide, some of the things on here I talked about already, but it highlights some of the different things that we use in forecasting and planning or projecting our budget for the coming year. This current year, we have a shortfall of about $920,000, but that's been filled with one-time federal COVID funds to avoid having to make significant reductions in our staffing. I talked about the debt levy, that $3 million prepayment being removed after this current year. We're anticipating flat enrollment and MTE projections. I talked already about the $125 per MTE in revenue limit authority. We're assuming no adjustments to state categorically. In the projections, it has an expense growth of 3% annually, and we know that there are times when that meets inflationary costs. We also know that right now, 3% doesn't meet current inflationary costs. We already talked about the $2.5 million referendum expiring. In a minute, I'm going to look at the district's mill rates, and when we get to that slide, we've used a projection of an annual increase in equalized property value of 4.7%. And we came to that number by looking at the average of the past 10 years for our school district without including last year's 17% growth. So this past year, the property values in our district increased by 17%. That was an outlier compared to previous years, so when we computed what we thought was going to happen in the future, we used an average of 4.7% because that was our 10-year average prior to last year. And that has an impact on the mill rate, as we'll see in just a minute. We used a conservative increase in state equalization aids, ceilings, and guarantees, and a flat levy for private school voucher programs. That would be something that would take legislative action to change. So a common question that we get is what impact will that have on our mill rate, our taxes? And we talk about the district's wide mill rate, and individuals may pay a slightly higher or slightly lower amount on this depending on what happens with their property value or their municipality's property value in the coming year. So these are our district-wide history and district-wide projections. Our district-level mill rate is the amount per $1,000 of fair market property value, and that's computed by taking that total tax levy divided by the total equalized property value of the district and then multiplying that by 1,000. If you recall, our total tax levy for this current year is about $22 million, so that's the numerator there. The denominator is all of the property in the district, whether it's residential property, business property, ed property, is all included in that total equalized property value. So on the left side of the table, it lists our mill rate history for the 10 years from 2013 up to this current year. And you can see our current year's mill rate is $8.11, so that means district-wide, $100,000 property that's worth $100,000 or has a fair market property value of $100,000 would pay $811 per year in property taxes for the school district. You can see that over those previous 10 years, the highest the highest that it was was in 2019, when it was $9.26. The lowest was in 2018, when it was $7.81. But for the most part, the blue in the chart, you can see some ups and downs. But overall, compared to a lot of school districts, that's very stable changes in our mill rate. Some school districts will jump up about 11 or 12 at times. Some districts will be down in the five or six range at times. And we really have tried to keep that as stable as possible for our taxpayers. And you can see that the average of the past 10 years has been a mill rate of $8.61. So then in the red, it has the projections if the referendum is to pass. Remember, the current mill rate is $8.11. If the referendum passes and we have that $1 million increase in the levy for the coming year and a 4.7% increase in the total equalized property value, the mill rate would go from $8.11 to $8.21. And then in the following year with another $1 million added to the levy, the mill rate would go up to $8.28. In the third year to $8.31. In the fourth year to $8.37. And each of those are with an additional $1 million from the referendum on the mill rate. And then the projection in 2027 is that the mill rate would go down to $8.12, which is nearly the same as it is right now because there wouldn't be any additional gains in the levy from this referendum. So the last thing to share is just the specific ballot language. And we've already talked about what that looks like. But it would be asking the voters whether the school district could be authorized to exceed the revenue limit by $4 million for the '23, '24 school year, then an additional $1 million for a total of five, and then another $1 million for a total of six, and then an additional $3.5 million for the '26, '27 school year for a total of $9.5 million, and to remain at that amount for recurring purposes consisting of ongoing educational programs, staffing, and maintenance expenses. So when people go to the ballot box to vote, that is the question that they will see. And there's an opportunity for folks to learn more. We have a referendum page on our website. Folks can access it through the QR code or at the website that's listed. It contains a lot of the information that we just went through. It also has a pretty substantial frequently asked questions page that we're continuing to add to as we get more and more questions. So this is the information that we shared out with staff and arranged with staff when we, in upcoming parent group and community meetings, make sure to share this information with members of the community. Questions, thoughts, comments from board members?
I think just a couple of things to reinforce from that is, you know, again, we're dealing with challenges created somewhere else. The state decided funding wasn't as important as it ought to be. We, hundreds of other school districts are struggling with that right now. Which, as you pointed out, this is just simply the maintained programming. This isn't an expansion of anything. This is just simply maintaining what we're doing now, is what we're talking about here. The projections that are put together on here are using conservative estimates. There's no pie in the sky approach to this. This is just a very conservative approach to come up with what we need to simply announce and check each year. Although the question is complicated to read. It's essentially $1 million new per year for consecutive years. As you see on the forecast, it covers the projected deficit again, just to simply maintain what we're doing now and class sizes that we have now. One thing that I know you touched upon, Rich, was the community open houses and frequently asked questions that come up. Obviously, the format is more conversational in that type of environment. I just maybe reiterating, frequently asked questions of the communities putting in and things like that, the opportunity to add a via. Again, more of a conversational approach than the model lot that we're having today is going to be there, just confirming that for the benefit of the community.
Absolutely. Yeah, the presentations, whether it's with a parent group, a community group, or it's open to any members of the community, are very much designed to be able to have folks ask questions, have us be able to answer questions, and have a conversation about the need that was demonstrated and the impact that it would have. If the referendum passes or doesn't pass, what impact does that have on our students and staff and schools and programs? And what impact would it have on our taxpayers? So you're exactly right there.
And I would piggyback on Dave's comment a little bit and remind folks that the Board and Finance Committee had a real goal of trying to balance, you know, the impact that, you know, we're sensitive to the fact that public does impact folks. And we're balancing that against the needs that our students have. And landed where we did so that, as Rich alluded to in the slides there, it minimizes the year-to-year changes in mill rate and whatnot. And I did the quick math. If the referendum is successful, if you divide out the dollar values by our student counts, it will still keep us below averages of both the county and the conference. So it's not putting us in any financial situation drastically different than we've got relative to our peers. So that was an important piece that we factored into how we came up with the amounts that we chose to bring forward.
Any other questions for Rich on the information relative to the referendum?
Rich, on the two open house informative sessions on the 20th and 21st, other than tonight's meeting, how are we going to let the community know of these events?
We are posting those on social media. We send out email information to parents because we have access to the parenting mail addresses. But it's also important that we're communicating with everyone in the community. So we're hopeful that the local media will cover those coming up so that folks that read the earlier and the exact will see that. We're making social media posts on our website and also posted on our school district's website and social media posts. Anyone else? All right, we will move along. Item number three is a presentation relative to our financial audit. We have used Johnson and Block for a number of years as partners in this process. And Kerry, are you going to introduce our guest, or would you like me to?
Go for it.
Okay. We would like to welcome Ms. Bear with me, Kuei Ma.
Yes.
Thank you. Took a stab at it, and I hope that was where you needed me to be. So share with us, if you can, the highlights from your folks' audit for our school district.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for having me here to present the audit. My name is Kuei Ma. I'm an audit supervisor with Johnson Block. And today, I will just go over this financial highlight with you. Feel free to stop me if you have any questions. Let's take a look at the page number one. So page number one gives some, like, the contents of what was included in the audit financial report. So first of all, it's our independent auditors report. This states our responsibility as auditors, which is to express an opinion on these financial statements based on our audit. And this year, our report is an unmodified opinion that was issued for this financial statement. And this means that the financial statements presented fairly in accordance with accounting principles. And then we have the management's discussions and analysis. And we have the government-wide financial statements, which report governmental and the business-type activities. It is under full group basis of accounting. And like the debt is reported, long-term liabilities and capital assets is reported as long-term assets. We have fund financial statements, which contains financial statements on individual funds. Governmental funds, we have like general fund and also some non-major funds. It measures resources available for current use. And this one, we report debt principal payment as expenditures and also the addition of capital assets as expenditures as well. So it is kind of different than the government-wide financial statements. And this fund financial statement is under modified group basis. So we're kind of a little different. And now we have business type funds, which is accounted for similar to businesses. And it includes the food service fund. So financial statements will follow back notes to the financial statements, which contain summary of significant accounting policies and footnotes related to significant financial statement costs, which includes cash, debt, capital assets, responsible retirement systems, and OPAP disclosures. We also have required supplementary information and other supplementary information. Besides the financial audit, we also do a single audit report. And it is drafted, and we've already received a representation letter. So we are planning to issue that report this week. Other reports that we submitted to PPI, we submitted PI 1506 Auditor Eight Certification Report on September 19th and also the Audit Fund Balance Report on September 19th, 2022. We will also submit a single audit report to the Federal Plenary House, and we plan to submit that by the end of this month. Besides the audit reports, we also issued audit matters requiring communication to the governing body, and that is a standard communication. There was no specific discussion items to note. But we also issued a managing letter with two comments. One is related to uninsured bank deposits. So as of June 30, 2022, the district had about 155,000 uninsured bank deposits, which are subject to some additional risk. So this one, we just want to brought it up to the Board to have you be aware of that. Another comment is informational comment. So in the next year, 2022 and 2023 school year, there will be a new accounting standard adopted and applied for that year's financial audit. Any questions so far? No. Okay, page number three. Okay. Page number three is the financial highlight for general fund. So we can see that the total assets of general fund is pretty comparable to last year. We have total assets of $16,600,000. And then the liability, the current liability includes accounts payable and also accrued payroll expenses, which is about $5 million. Then you have short-term debt of about $1.4 million at the end of the year. In the middle of this, on the middle of this page, there is a detail of general fund balance. So there is non-spendable fund balance of $94,000, which is mainly the prepaid expenses that cannot be used in '22, '23 fiscal school year. And restricted fund balance of $106,000, which has to be used for special, like, for some specific programs. Committed fund balance of $463,000, and underfunded fund balance of $9.5 million. That can be used for the operating of school districts. We also did a calculation of the underfunded fund balance to subsequent year general fund budget, and we came up with 19%. It is the same percentage as last year. On the bottom of the page, we have a budget to actual comparison. And you can see that the total revenue is over budget. Total expenditures is under budget. And then, which added up, you have $1.1 million of net decrease of funds. On page number four, it is, just give us some information related to some expenditures that are over budget. So for general fund, the vocational instruction function is over budget for $21,000, which is the non-program services is over budget for $92,000. But in total, general fund expenditures were under budget by $740,000, and special education fund expenditures were under budget by $442,000. Page number five gives to some information related to some other funds, fund balance, including special revenue funds, capital projects funds, debt service fund, and food services. Here, for food service fund, this number of fund balance, $543,600. That is under full group basis of accounting, and it's different than the, your day-to-day books of the district. On the, like, for your books, the fund balance is $665,000. Page six, we give debt information. So as of the last year, 2022, you have outstanding general obligation debt of $52,585,000. And you still have about 78% of availability to afford. Page seven and page eight gives to some historical data about the general fund and debt service fund expenditures. And page nine and 10 gives the information, like, historical data about the general fund revenues. So I won't go through this in detail. On page number 11, so the last page of this report, it reports the activities net cost. So the net cost is the total cost less fees generated by the activities and the incremental aid provided for specific programs. So the net cost represents the amounts financed by taxpayers and the general state aid. So you can see that the net cost of services for the year of 2022 is about $35,806,000. So that's pretty much what I want to go over tonight. Do you have any questions? I know I go over that thoroughly.
You mentioned on page three, a fund balance increase of $1.1 million. Can you walk me through that? Like, what exactly does that mean?
So that means that the revenue is over expenditures for the fiscal year 2022 for general fund and special education fund, this $1.1 million. So you got, it's, they were like net for the business.
Kerry or Rich chimed in as needed. My recollection is recent that went out. Like, that was the just number of budgeted but unrecognized expenses during COVID, where buses, for example, didn't run daily because schools worked well and things like that. So that, the one-time increase really wasn't on time, fund balance, to John's question, because of, again, the number one recognized expenses that were during the crux of the pandemic, essentially.
And maybe you can speak to this part. The answer to your question is if you look at where it says detailed general fund balance, you can see we have-
What page is that, Kerry?
On that same page, page number three. Okay, you can see that we have, that our non-spendable fund balance is higher, our restricted fund balance is higher. And then, if you recall, the committed fund balance of a little less than $500,000 was the payment that we had received from the governor later in the year to, related to COVID. And the Board made the decision to commit those funds for balancing future budgets because we didn't need it last year, and we knew we might need it in the future. So, gosh, probably half of that amount is accounted for in fund balance designations that we didn't have in prior year. So I don't know if that helps answer your question?
Yeah, doesn't it? I think that what Dave had shared is part of the puzzle too because we, not only for, we gave an example of transportation, but every year, we budget for full staffing, for 100% of our staffing plan. And we know that we at various times throughout the year have positions that are open, whether it's someone leaves and it takes a while to fill that position, or at times, we have had positions that haven't been filled because we haven't been able to find qualified candidates. So that has an impact on, at the end of the year, how we perform compared to budget planning at start year.
So that's on the expenditure side. Thank you.
Right. So, and also, if you have the, like, full financial report, on page 44 and page 45, that has the detailed budget to actual. So you can see it, each line item, it's not this, it's not this. But for regular instructions, you budgeted for like $17,544,000, but you only spent $17,285,000, which saved you about $258,000. And then for the instructional staff services, you budgeted for $2.2 million, but you only spent $2 million, so which also saved you about $213,000. So those items of those functions has been, sort of, saved you some of the expenditures. That's what mainly, like, Rich said, that you cannot debudget for those many staff, but you cannot, not that stuff.
Anybody else have questions?
I think just worth noting, independent audit is- I think just worth noting, independent audit is, is pretty much as the most comprehensive and done financial thing that we can get. A lot of hours both on our accounting firm and on our staff have put into it, and there's a lot of work that goes into it. And one of the things that, that I look for is any, any commentary that would suggest there's lack of cooperation from anyone, or if there's any comments or notable adjustments, and as always, there hasn't been. And again, just Kerry and your team and Rich overall, you know, there's a lot of work that goes into it. Now, good cooperation and everything that pretty much comes through without any significant changes is, is a good thing. So just wanted to recognize that and say thank you for your efforts and thank you for your efforts.
Thank you. I would also like to thank you to Kerry and Rich for them help with our audit too. Without their assistance, we cannot finish this. Thank you very much. Do you have any other questions?
Just one statement that I make, it's, it's really important for us to be transparent in our, in our financial situation and to talk both with the board and with the community about, about where we are. So the audit is an important part of that. And I want to echo the, the thanks to both Kerry and everyone in our business office for the outstanding job that they do on a day-to-day basis to work towards that.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
All right, moving down to four is an HR committee report, Rick.
HR committee has met twice since our last board meeting on January 25th and February 8th. At each meeting, we discussed the employee health insurance premium share and the wellness incentive. The committee and the benefits advisory group have been discussing reasons why we're looking to make any changes to the current benefits offered. And the committee has some recommendations to bring to the full board tonight. Before we get into that, Chris has some information to share with us.
Thank you. Kerry, can you bring up the presentation? Okay, so I will walk through this presentation. Please let me know if you have any questions as we go through this process or this presentation and move on to the memo. So if you can go to slide two, please. The Human Resources Committee has met over the last four months to examine data on employee benefits and consider options. Through this process, the benefits advisory group met multiple times to provide feedback to the committee. We discussed the use of data to drive decisions, similar to how the district reviews and compares compensation to our peer school districts in the Badger Conference and Rock County and surrounding districts. Milton is coming to the end of our three-year recap with Dean Health Insurance. For the 23-24 year, we will be capped at a 6.9% increase. It is important to make sustainable decisions for our future. As medical trends increase, we need to manage the budget impact of employee benefits. Currently, benefits are 22% of the district's overall budget. In conversations with other school districts, we have heard that there are some districts that are slightly higher and some districts that are slightly lower than that. We focus on a proactive approach to address short and long-term medical costs. The district's medical loss ratio for the 21-22 year was 108.3%. This means that for every $1 Dean Health Insurance received from the school districts of Milton, it paid out $1.08 in claims. Move on to the next slide, please. So in this slide, you will see that this is active employee and employer share of premium costs, what the district and staff pay as of today. And in this conversation, I'll focus on the single HRA, that first one that is listed there. So you have an annual premium. And then for the support staff category, the district pays 94%. You'll see the employee category of 6%. And then continuing from left to right, you'll see the certified staff, the district pays 87.4%. And the employer, I'm sorry, the employee pays 12.6%. And then the box below that is the Dean Health Insurance Premium. This is what the school district in Milton is invoiced for. So you will see that for the 22-23 total annual premium cost is 5.1 million, almost 5.2 million dollars. And with the 6.9% rate cap, then we will realize it increases to 5.5 million dollars for the 23-24, with a projected increase of 358,502 dollars. Move on to the next slide, please. Okay, the next four slides will break down the district's comparisons. These graphs depict what an employee could pay for medical costs with the assumption that they have reached their full deductible under the HRA or the HSA. In reviewing the first chart, the support staff's single health insurance, HRA and HSA for the Rock County and bordering school districts. You will note that the circle is Milton's HRA and HSA. And then the red line is the median. On the next one, you'll see that this is the Badger Conference for single health insurance on the left, and then family health insurance on the right. Underneath this page, you'll see that it's the certified staff for the Rock County and bordering school districts, and the single on the left and the family on the right. And this slide is the Badger Conference with the same information. Again, the rock, the circle means that that is the point school district in Milton compared to those other districts. Okay, on to the traditional levers slide. What can the school district in Milton do to help control health insurance budget? Plan design, this is that, right after the blue arrow, has been our focus the last few years. Examples include introduction of a health reimbursement arrangement, the HRA, introduction of the HSA, the house savings account, consolidation to one health insurance carrier, deductible and prescription drug changes. And if you move to the premium share, we'll see review of the comparables and identify where our staff are compared to peer school districts. And those are the slides that we just went through. Health ability. Board of Education is currently reviewing retiree health insurance in joint finance and HR committee meetings. And staff wellness. The population health has been our focus in our conversations this year. Medical loss ratio, as previously mentioned, was at 108.3%, and it is not based on a few large claims, but rather shows an ongoing trend, as per Ali Yager with associate with USI, our insurance broker. We are working to promote screenings and focus on wellness, continuing to communicate with staff on benefits and wellness opportunities. If you'll recall, the school district in Milton participates with the school employee wellness clinic and provides that as an option and a resource to our staff. It assists with helping to improve access to primary care, low cost for HSA employees that have the HSA plan, or no cost for HRA employees. And we also have access to the health, health transformation consultants that work through the clinic. The consultants help our employees find care in a timely manner. Through the focus of staff wellness and population health, the HR committee has reviewed the incentive of wellness incentives. The incentive being shared tonight leads to improved population health. In other words, the better quality of life for our staff. It is a long-term strategy to address medical costs. The HR committee recommends implementation of wellness incentive for those participating in district-sponsored health insurance plans of $200 for single coverage and $400 for family coverage. So with that, this leads into our proposed slide, which is very similar to our slide on number three. So after reviewing the issue, the Human Resources Committee is recommending a change to the 23-24 health insurance premium share. And this slide represents that change. So again, looking at the single HRA, you will notice that the annual premium is listed, and this is after the 6.9% rate cap. And then you'll see the increases for the support staff. The district had 90% and the employee percentage had 10%. The certified staff had 85% and the employee percentage had 15%. And then on the last slide, this is, represents the district's contribution numbers, or what the district will be looking at for the 22-23 year, what is currently happening right now. So you have 4.6 million, and this is with the proposed increased employee share with the 6.9% rate cap. This is our current cost. So then if you're moving from left to right, under the 23-24 year, it increases to 4.8 million, and that is the new cost. Okay, so we're not in 23-24 yet, so this is a estimating amount. And that is increased employee share with the 6.9 rate cap. So that difference is 160,600. If board approves the wellness incentive and 100% of our active staff participate, that would add in 116,200, which is that second row. Approximate district budget impact would be 276,800. It's important to note on the estimated health insurance budget impact side, the estimated cost of the wellness incentive at 100% is 116, but it does not include retired employees receiving a retirement health insurance benefit.
From the information Chris shared, there's a couple of things that I want to highlight to make sure that the board members who aren't on the HR committee are aware of to it. One is on the comparison, so when we make comparisons to, to Rock County and surrounding school districts and the Badger Conference school districts, there's a pretty stark difference for our supportive staff. And Kerry, if you go back to either one of those with supportive staff, you can see that in this graph, lower bars means a lower cost for the employees. And then in correspondence, a higher cost or higher contribution from the school district. We are, we are outlier in having different levels of employee share for certified staff versus supportive staff. If you recall, ours is 12.6% for certified staff and 6% for support staff. And it's, it's very rare in all the comparison districts that there's a difference between the employee share from employee group to another employee group. So that's one thing that I wanted to point out to, to make sure that folks were aware of. And the other, Chris, I'll relate to it a little bit. In, in the agenda, there's two different recommended actions. There's separate motions, and these came from the HR committee. The first is around the addition of a wellness incentive. The second is around making a change to the employee share of the premium for the coming year. And I think it's important to note, the way that that first one is worded, it says that that would be for those participating in district-sponsored health insurance plans. And technically, both our active employees and retirees could be participating in, in district-sponsored health insurance plans. So if the intent is to include both active employees and retirees, the motion could be made in the way that it's written right now. If the intent is to do this for active employees and not lump retirees in with that group, then they would need to, to make the motion that it would be include that word for active employees participating in district-sponsored health insurance plans. It's, it's an important difference for the board to consider. As Chris shared on that last slide where it estimates the budget impact, that 116,200 is 100% participation from active employees. So that number doesn't include retirees. So if retirees are, are added to that wellness incentive, if that's approved by the board, that cost to the district would go up. And then we also know that the HR committee and the finance committee have been meeting together to look at retiree benefits. So an option would be to consider making a decision about retiree inclusion in a wellness incentive at the same time that other decisions are made about retiring benefits and make this decision based on just active employees. But that would be a decision that the board could decide. HR committee members, if you want to add your thoughts on that topic or on any of the other things that, that Chris shared or that we discussed at our meetings.
Do we know what the increase would be if we added retirees to the wellness incentive?
Yes, Kerry and I were looking at some very preliminary numbers, and that would be approximately 9,000. Now, one thing I want to point out too, that in our conversations with legal, they have stated that somebody that's on Medicare wouldn't be, they wouldn't be able to participate in this because they would be on a supplemental plan.
So wellness incentive, they would not be able to go for a wellness incentive.
Wellness incentive. Thank you for the question. So that would be one thing that we would want to bet out more thoroughly. But it would be a very rough number, it would be approximately 9,000.
The other thing that I want to note in the way that the motion is, the recommended motion from the HR committee is laid out, is that what's being asked for the board to approve is the addition of that wellness incentive at the amounts that are listed, $200 for folks who are on the single plan and $400 for people who are on the family plan. And it directs the district administrative development implementation plan and share with the HR committee by the end of March. There's a lot of different things that could be built into a wellness incentives. Ali Yager has, has a lot of good examples. We've had some conversations with the benefits advisory group about what that potentially could look like. But before diving into the nuts and bolts is what that would look like, we wanted to know if the board is in favor of us pursuing that. Some of the conversation at the benefits advisory group with, with employees was around the importance of wellness and the importance of doing screenings, both as, as the presentation shared about wellness standpoint. You're, you're more likely to avoid long-term health issues if you're doing your annual screenings, if you're doing the wellness visits. And the impact of that on a financial basis for the employee and for the school district. So there's some strong reasons why a large number of districts have been to offering wellness incentives. The 200 and 400, we talked about at the HR committee as approximately 2% of the employees' share. So in this second proposal, it's, it's boosting the certified staff from 12.6% to 15%, but it would be offset by about 2% if they take advantage of that wellness incentive opportunity. And for the same thing for the support staff, a 6% to 10% is in the recommended motion, but that increase would be offset by approximately a 2% discount, if you will, if they take advantage of the, of the wellness incentive. So we felt it was important for the board to make a decision on the wellness incentive first before the discussion and action on any increases in the employee's share. But those increases would put us more in line with what we're seeing in other districts and actually having a wellness incentive would put us more in line with what's happening in other districts too. A couple of concerns that came up at the benefits advisory group once the staff were around what they would need to do to qualify for the wellness incentive. And one person expressed concern, will I need to have, will there be, you have to have your heart rate at a certain level, your rate has to be within a certain scale. And that certainly is not the direction that we would be going to that extent. It really would be built around people taking advantage of their, their wellness opportunities and their annual screenings, and the HR committee was, was on board with that in our conversation.
Rich, could you speak to why?
Rich, could you speak to why maybe proposed, uh, premium share change? Why the certified staff percentage is smaller than the support staff? Percentage?
Get increased.
Yeah, the change, yeah.
Yeah, uh, and, and it goes back, we don't have to go back to the slides. We remember the slides where our support staff are considerably below what's happening in other districts. And that in part was the case when this plan was put in place a number of years ago because our support staff salaries also didn't keep pace with, uh, those salaries in comparable districts. If you recall, we spent a lot of, of time looking at where we are compared to other districts in salaries and benefits for all of our employee groups. And we've made significant increases in the, of the salaries for our support staff to get them more in line with, with other groups. And that 6% is very, very much an outlier with other, with other, with what we're seeing in other districts.
Yeah, a lot of the discussion we had at the H R committee level was around the, uh, the ending of this 6.9% percent. This is the last year of that. We wanted to make sure that we, we're going to be able to come up with a, um, competitive and sustainable plan for our staff. Uh, we also spent some time looking at comparables and wanting to make sure that we, uh, feel that something that's come more in line with the comparables. Um, but we also spent some time talking about, the benefits advisory group spent a lot of time talking about, um, Eli Yager spent a lot of time talking about the importance of your screenings and, um, these wellness visits and stay up to date and what that can do to mitigate medical costs in the long run. So, um, that's why I think this wellness incentive is a great idea. Um, I also think it's important to note that, that employee share of this, for the certified staff has, has it changed in what, Chris, like 10 years?
Since that, yeah, like post that 10, like right after.
Yeah, so it's been a long.
About a dozen years.
Yeah, okay, so, um, and so, yeah, there, there's a proposed increase, but we, uh, we feel that's, um, being offset by this proposed wellness incentive too. So that's why the committee's bringing this forward tonight.
Just a question, I don't know if it's for Chris or for Rich, but, um, since the implementation plan hasn't really been developed yet, while, while, Rich, you said it's, it's not going to be like heart rate or, or weight. Um, but certainly there's going to be something that's going to qualify someone to be, to take part in it, correct? And that hasn't been established yet.
That would be part of the plan. And I would share a little background information from the conversation at the H R committee was putting a plan in place that people qualify for first before they get their payment. So one of the things that we talked about with the committee was building in some type of deadline. I'm just using this as an example, but it could look something like, here are the things that you need to do, and you have until January 31st of 2024 to do those things. And then everyone who qualifies for wellness incentive who has done those things by January 31st would receive their wellness incentive payment on their first March paycheck. So that type of thing is what we're talking about. But we wanted to have another meeting with, with Al and, and detail what some of those specifics would be.
The reason I'm bringing this up is because there's always going to be people who are going to say, I'm not going to do A, B, C, and D in order to participate. They just don't want to do it or for whatever reason. So while the, while your presentation, Chris, that if 100% participates, that's what the cost would be. There might not be 100, 100% that participate. In fact, I just doubt there's going to be 100%.
I'm almost certain that there will be 100%. Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think I remember Eli Yager saying in other districts, 90%ish?
Absolutely, yes, that is correct. He used it right on that 90%. But I think it's very clear, and I need to be able to share with you, is what does that potentially look like? And that's what, like Rich had said, we're looking to get more of that information. But Al has shared that this would be a conversation with somebody. So if I'm at the point of my age-appropriate screening would be a colonoscopy, it's not me going off to get my colonoscopy. This would be me meeting with my primary care physician or potentially somebody at the school employee wellness clinic. And it would be a conversation about what my age-appropriate screenings would be. So that's on a high level where we're, yeah. Thank you.
First of all, to remind you, I'm not in agreement with this increase for the certified or the support staff. They, they saw an increase last year, which made them fall behind. We have a negotiated wages yet, salaries for them yet. So we don't know what that's going to look like. Um, Dean has this pattern of capping and giving good rates for so many years, and then they hit you with the shebang on the third or fourth bit here, whatever. Um, so they can dominate the insurance market. You can see by the number of districts that have gone to Dean because of that great deal they give, and then they get hit in the face for next, you know, when it finally ends. Um, this, for the support staff, I mean, a lot of them are working just to get their insurance and just to pay for their insurance and have little left over. So to say that we're going to give them more, it's not, I don't think we want to be competitive in the Badger Conference because we're increasing costs and we look like radical media or whatever. I mean, that's a negative impact on our staff. And, um, I think they're reeling from falling behind last year with their overall impact. And until we know what salaries are going to look like and salary increases, um, I'm not in agreement with this. Um, I have experienced the wellness thing with our district. And we had, uh, it was where it was a, uh, the rate, the increase rate. So if you participate in wellness, you stay at whatever the rate was. If you did it, then it saw an increase. And you're right, some people didn't want to do it. They don't want people watching them and knowing, what's the business? Otherwise, it was like a cholesterol B and I type. It wasn't anything major. Um, so I would be as far as that, but that's still going to put them behind because they're still going to have to pay for the 100 or 200s. But even with the incentive. And if it's put in the paycheck, our taxes taken out of them, so they don't see the full percent, 200 or 400. So then that's not even a full month.
But it's still at the same time that what they currently pay right now on the payroll chart too is also subject to taxes too.
Oh, yeah, that's a right one on that in favor.
Any else with questions for H R?
I was gonna say, Shelley, initially, I was not in favor of it either. And one of the things that pushed me over was the wellness incentive. I believe in that folding. Not only does it help offset that increase, in fact, when I ran the numbers, just for an example, for what they paid last year to this year or next year, um, when you add in that $400 wellness benefit, it's like a $100 or $200 increase in some cases, which is still an increase, but it's minimal. So that kind of pushed me over. I think the wellness incentive, not only, um, Chris, you mentioned this, uh, a lot of reasons for it financially, but improving population health, I think, is what you said in your, uh, presentation.
Correct.
And to me, that's one of the most important things. So I, I think to push for 100% of that incentive and get people to do that, not only to recruit some money, but also to have our staff healthy per, um, would be, uh, a good thing. So I do wish we could tie this in with the pay increase negotiations, but that's for down the road. So just know that I'll be, that'll be a, a subject for you and some of the rest to consider at that time.
Another thing I think we need to just acknowledge, and I think our staff needs to acknowledge, and I don't know if we have, um, historical records on this, but no business, the M L R, the M L R, the medical loss ratio at 108.3 tons of a percent. No business can stay in business if they're paying out more than they're taking in. I mean, that's just, that's just common sense. And so, like, why are we at 108.3%? I think is really a question that every staff member should be asking themselves. Like, that, that's a reality.
If you recall, the, the slide that had the four levers and, and the, and the circle, uh, one of those was around wellness and the importance of, of catching things when they're small. Our benefits advisory group spent a lot of time in conversation with Al Yager, talking about that, that medical loss ratio. And it's, it's seems obvious, but I think it, it, it's worth the repeat that you gave to that, that, that Dean is spending more on us than they're taking in. And when insurance companies do that, and it isn't just Dean, uh, because districts across the state have seen double-digit increases in their rates over the past few years, no matter what provider they have. Uh, and we're anticipating significantly higher rates once our caps are done. Um, so that's the nature of medical care and medical insurance right now. Um, there are things that we can do to help bring that 108% down. Um, insurance companies target 88%. So it's, it's significantly above, uh, what their goal is. And, yeah, obviously, they're going to increase costs to, to, to make sure that they're not continuing to spend more money on us than, than they have.
I was gonna say, you just can't expect insurance rates to not go up if your M R R is 108%.
Correct. And then the other thing I want to note on that last slide was that the budget impact for the district, if the wellness incentive is in place and if the increased employee cost is there, is, is almost 277,000. So that's new money that we're going to be spending as, on benefits for our staff that we aren't spending this year. So that's money that's going to need to be budgeted for to know what position our budget is in. Uh, every dollar that was increased cost in one area is going to have to come from somewhere else. So, uh, we, we've known that we're likely to get that 6.9% increase. We've known that that's going to be, um, about a $320,000 cost to the district if we don't make any changes. Um, we know from the information that's on the slide that even with these changes, it's going to increase the size of our benefits, uh, piece of the, piece of the file.
So Rich, the recommended action includes the retirees?
The way it's worded right now, it, it says for those participating in district-sponsored health insurance plans. And retirees are participants in district-sponsored health insurance plans. So if we want to talk about that a little bit, H R committee was the intent to include or not include? Or do we have thoughts on making that decision tonight? Or having that be part of the retiree benefits discussion that we're picking up, um?
I'd say definitely include it.
What's that?
I'd say definitely include it.
Include that?
Include it in one way, whether it's tonight or the post or follow-up meeting? Because what about your thing about the Medicare? If they're on Medicare, they may not be eligible. How do we carve that out if we approve it tonight? Is that?
We can go back to the implementation plan when, when that's developed. So if it is the intent, then, and I think Chris had shared, uh, the annual cost of that for next year would be about 9,000. Again, it depends on who, uh, does the wellness incentive and who doesn't. So if it's, um, I think one thing that we should be alert to is if we do include retirees in that, that Mike, you're in that group. Uh, so Mike would make a decision on whether to vote on that topic or not vote on that topic.
And Mike's, Mike's decision would be to abstain from that vote? Because?
I feel like we should at least separate that for right now because we haven't had any conversation at the H R level about including or not including retirees. And we are taking, um, a pretty strategic look at their benefits separate from the active employees right now. So it would be my recommendation to actually remove the, like, retirees from this particular motion.
Or my suggestion, whoever puts the motion on the floor, use the recommended motion and put language in there that addresses active employees. Would that be sufficient?
If that's what?
I mean, if someone's willing to do that, that's my suggestion. That's the cleanest way, then our motion is specific.
Uh, just to make sure there's clarity on this, that taking action today to include this benefit for active employees for next year doesn't preclude the district from looping retirees in. Uh, if you recall, the timeline for that decision, we've got a meeting coming up this Wednesday. Uh, the plan is that following that meeting, we would, we have a meeting coming up on the 22nd with the benefits advisory group to talk to them about this topic. And then the plan would be, uh, was it going to be at the first board meeting in March where we would be looking at a, uh, potential action by the board on this topic?
That is correct, potentially. Depending on how our conversations over the next couple of weeks go. Can I add one thing to what you had said, Rich, about, um, that 276,000? And, um, also talking to, uh, Shelley on her points too. That 276,800 of new, um, a new amount for the 2324 year, that is important to note that that is not a short term. I mean, we're, the reason for that wellness incentive is further down the road. It's looking to be able to build, um, that knowledge and, and help our staff with that, uh, wellness initiative for that, uh, population health.
It very much is a long-term strategy on, on, uh, population health or employee health.
And I would say a multi-year strategy that actually, again, we're focusing on best practices, trying to build that mindset of the wellness incentive.
Was the retiree piece just overlooked at the meeting last week? Kind of, or?
Yes, I, I think when, when we ran the numbers, we ran the numbers for active, that's the, the 116,000. Um, and then when we were having a conversation, actually just today, uh, we reread the language and thought, well, this would include retirees, but we didn't talk about that with the H R committee. And, and we're not certain what the H R committee's intent was because we didn't have that conversation at the meeting.
Maybe because the, the goal of this is to improve the health of anyone on the district's health insurance.
Correct.
Whether they're retired, active, whichever. Um, yeah, I, I guess I would just, I would, it makes sense to me just to include them, but we can do that later, is that what you were saying?
Absolutely.
True. And both of these, uh, recommended motions are for the 2324 school year, so it isn't making a commitment to anyone, active or retirees, beyond this company there. I think from, from a management of the process standpoint, I don't know that there's a, a difference. It would be additional, a significant amount of additional work to do it for, for retirees in addition to active employees.
Are you saying, would we be able to add in language for those retiring 2320, or, in June of '23, could be included in this?
Even current retirees?
Or we just don't do that, do it separate? Later we decide to?
The way it's wording now in the proposed motion, it includes active and retired. It includes anyone that's on the plan, which are active, active who are retiring at the end of this year and folks who have already retired but still on a plan.
So this was your recommended action. Is there a reason you left it like this?
Because we had that conversation during the day today.
Okay.
This was posted?
We weren't going to change the recommended motion before having, I mean, this is the H R committee's recommended motion, and we didn't want to make a change to it without a conversation tonight.
And again, I still would argue that we haven't really had that conversation as it relates to the committee level. So again, and until perhaps we learn a little bit more about the effect on the retirees or the changes that we may be taking to the OPAD decisions as well.
I don't know, I think we're making it more difficult than we used to be. I, I, that's, that's my, so. I'm going to go ahead and make the motion to approve the addition of a wellness incentive for those participating in district-sponsored health insurance plans. And the amount of 200 for those with single coverage and 400 for those with family coverage for the 202324 plan year. Board of Education directs the district administrator to develop an implementation plan and share with the human resources committee by March 31st, 2023.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion properly advanced and seconded as you just heard Rick read. Uh, I won't reread it for you, but I will point out that it is the recommended motion, which per our discussion is going to inclusive, be inclusive of active and retired, uh, employees. Just so everyone's clear. And, um, having said that, if we get to the voting standpoint, And having said that, if we get to the voting standpoint, Mike has indicated that he would probably abstain.
Not probably, well abstain.
I didn't even survive that. But Mike will abstain. And just so everyone's aware, Dave stepped out, has also a family member involved in this discussion, so Dave will also be abstaining, just so everyone's clear. Are there any other questions on the motion that has been advanced?
Before we vote, Chris, in your opinion, do the people, retirees on Medicare, is that going to cause a problem with our vote if this passes? I don't believe so, right now, John? Because from a legal perspective, what we were shared with today is they're just not able to do so. And that's the difference between being on the health insurance plan and then having a supplemental because they are Medicare eligible, whether that's a single Medicare plan, a split family Medicare plan, or a family Medicare plan. So there's a lot more details I need to look into that, but right now, legal says that that is probably not doable.
Did legal say that it's probably not doable, or did legal say that they aren't eligible to have a wellness incentive?
I believe they're not 100% on that, Rich.
It seems to me like we could make them eligible, but if Medicare says no, that takes it out of our hands.
Correct.
I mean, I don't think we're creating any kind of a problem for ourselves. We can have it as an eligible thing, but if Medicare determines they're not, then there is not.
And we would communicate with...
I wasn't in that discussion, but that's my interpretation.
And we would communicate with those people that are on our retired plans.
Anyone else questions on the motion? It's rather complex, so I will reread it. Rick has offered a motion seconded by Jennifer to approve the addition of a wellness incentive for those participating in district-sponsored health insurance plans, an amount of $200 for those with single coverage and $400 for those with family coverage for the 2023-24 plan year. The Board of Education directs the district administrator to develop an implementation plan and share it with the Human Resources Committee by March 31st, 2023. Okay, we will proceed to vote, and I'll roll call this, and I will start on my right with John.
Yes.
And Mike is abstaining, and Rick?
Yes.
And Joe is a yes. Jennifer?
Yes.
And Shelley?
Yes.
Is a yes. That motion clearly passes five to zero.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to modify the employee's share of health insurance premium for the 2023-24 plan year, changing the employee portion of the premium for certified staff from 12.6% to 15%, and the employee portion of the premium for support staff from 6% to 10%.
Thank you. Motion from Rick, seconded by Jennifer, as you just heard him, to change our employee contributions, both certified and support staff, in the percentages listed there. Comments, or questions on this motion, discussion, I should say?
Just for the record, this has nothing to do with retirees, so I will be holding on this.
Yeah, that would be logical. Anyone else? And we'll also roll call both this, I guess. I'll reread it, just so we're clear. Rick offered a motion, seconded by Jennifer, to modify the employee's share of health insurance premium for 23, 24 plan year, changing the employee portion of the premium for certified staff from 12.6% to 15%, and the employee portion of the premium for support staff from 6% to 10%. Also, roll call voted, then I'll start on the left with Shelley.
No.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Joe is yes. Rick?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
That is a five to one, that motion passes. Thank you, HR committee, for your diligence on that portion. We will move down to the joint HR Finance Committee report on a related topic, I guess, as it comes out.
Guys, just for a moment, if you want to get paid.
Oh, I'm sorry. I should have been a little more cognizant of that. I should have been aware. Hey, Dave, come back!
I don't think you've grown too far away, so you shouldn't be back. We're being a home.
On January 25th, the Joint Finance and HR Committee met with key benefits concepts to review and consider restructuring the post-employee benefits. The meeting focused on the following: review of preliminary post-employment benefit plan goals, examine current post-employment benefit costs, and to explore the post-employment benefit options available to us. Next meeting is scheduled for this coming Wednesday, and the committees will review the projected cash flows and costs related to post-employment benefits. I think we were all there, so I'm sure anyone has any questions or comments on that?
And I already talked through kind of what the timeline is, what's coming up for that, so.
Just a comment, kind of piggybacks off what you said earlier, Rich, is, you know, we're in a era in education that we haven't been in in ever with such competition for staff. And keeping these post-employment benefits so that it makes people that want to come and work in Milton, makes it that they want to come and stay, is really an important issue. I think sometimes we forget that what keeps people employed, and we want people to come to this district and not just stay a couple of years or just five years, but they come and stay for many, many, many years. And so it's important that we continue to look at this and offer something to our employees that is beneficial to them, but also wants, keeps them in, to want to stay in our district. Important part of our conversations coming up.
Agreed. Anything else on the OPEP discussion? Well, I think that's as far as we got to get. Thank you, Chris. Okay, we will roll down. New business, A is Second Friday in January student count. I'm going to guess this is Carly.
All right. We did our people count. The first chart that I gave up represents the total number of students in our buildings. This is our residents and open enrollment. The far right shows the total in buildings, and then the bottom is going to show those totals by grade level. So we were at 34, 37 in buildings.
Just one thing that I want to go, before we transition to the other slide, is, and I think most post-board members are aware to this, but community members might not, is that every September, I mean, the third Friday in September, we do our September count, and then every January, every school district in the state does their January count. So this is something that's prescribed by the state, and we do it every year. And we implement to the board and turn it into, to the EEA.
Is there no, no wire to the high school?
There is. They're high school students. They're asking about the, I see what you're asking. They do that through the EEA.
And then this next chart, like Rich was saying, we do the count twice a year in September and January. This shows the resident totals by grade level, as well as the number of open enrollment outs and ins. Those totals are shown at the bottom. And then if you go to the far right, you'll see the total pupil count again, which is what we just looked at from the other chart, with the comparison data from September. And then you'll see the two counts labeled total adjusted headcount. Another way to look at that is the total resident headcount. Again, comparing the September count from January, this is the number that we use to determine our FTE. And then finally, at the bottom, you'll see the summary boxes for the total adjusted headcount, which is up seven, the total in buildings, which is up 10, and then our total FTE, which is up four.
All of those comparisons that Carly just highlighted are comparisons from September to January. So it's not comparing back to previous years. It's September to January, and you see there that it's a good trend. It seems we're picking up more students than we lose generally here. And there's always families that we've hit of this district, families that we've lost, but overall, gaining more students than we lose. And then I was going to talk through that and one more 10-year comparison, just to see what that history looks like. So when you look at that, kind of explain what's measured there. This is the people count in the buildings, so it's the number of students in enrollment. And you can see how along the left side are the different grade levels, all the preschool up to 12th grade. Across the top are the past 10 years of both September and January counts. And one thing to note is, is underneath that table, in the red and the green, is the change from September to January. So you can see that the red are some years where we decreased from September to January, the green are years where we increased. You know, a nice trend of seven of the last eight years, we gained students in that September through January window, is one thing I wanted to highlight. And the table in the bottom left is our people count trend data, so going back again the past 10 years, what those counts are in September and in January. You can see the early years there, we're in the 3300s, and then since then, we've been at the 3400s. The graph to the right just shows that as a line graph, and really displays that our enrollment has been pretty steady over that 10-year time. You can see some ups and downs, you can see some years where we were increasing, and some years where we were decreasing, but generally, overall, pretty stable enrollment. And there's one more thing that I want to highlight on here, because it really is a demonstration of the appeal that our district has to folks either moving into our district or choosing to open enrollment. And I want to highlight the last three years. If you look to the right of that top graph, and you can see the bottom, the 12th grade line is our number of graduates. And if you go back three years, you can see that 2021, we had 285 graduates, or seniors, I shouldn't say graduates, 12th graders in January, to be more specific. In the following year, last year, we had 293 seniors in January, this year, we had 277 seniors in January. Those are kids that at graduation time are moving out of our system. And we're replacing those with new kindergarten classes. You can see our new kindergarten classes for those last three years. If we look again at the January numbers, our January, three years ago was 248, two years ago was 225, and this year is 210. And if you just look at those three years combined and add those numbers up, we have 840 seniors those three years, and only 683 kindergartners. So the net difference between graduates and new kindergarten classes over those three years is a loss of 157 students. If we just subtract out the seniors and add in the kindergartners, if everything else was neutral, our enrollment this year would be 157 lower than it was three years ago. And if you look at the total enrollment from three Januaries ago, it was 34, 3481, and this year it's 3437. And going back even another year, it's 3424, our enrollment enrollment. So we are losing kids to graduation compared to bringing in kids, but we're gaining kids from families moving into our district at a higher rate and moving out, and people choosing open enrollment, to open enrollment at a higher rate than choosing to open enrollment out. So it's a testament to the great work that our staff does, and both educationally, the work that we do, and the opportunities for students are large reasons why people choose to live in a community or choose to open enrollment into a community. So it's good to see, and that trend of graduating more kids than you have kindergartners is not a Milton trend, that's a statewide and even a nationwide trend. There are significantly more 18-year-olds in the state of Wisconsin than there are 5-year-olds. And every year from 18 down to 5, there are fewer, fewer students. Families are having, couples are having smaller families, people are waiting longer to have families. So it's not unusual to have fewer kindergartners coming in and having seniors graduate.
Something struck me while you were talking, Rich. Do we adjust at all, or make any kind of a combination for early graduates? Are there a few number of kids that we wouldn't be counting, but technically we have a loss if they just graduated early?
Early graduates, if they graduate, now that we're on a trimester system, if they graduate after the second trimester, and, correct me if I'm wrong, they are still counted in the January count.
Yeah, it's the top. The vast majority of students who graduate early are going to, they actually, after the second trimester, that's in March.
Sure.
On various occasions, we have, we have two this year, they graduated after the first trimester or different circumstances, they would not even vote for me.
That's really unusual.
It is unusual at a much higher bar, as it's a pretty standard.
Well, I just didn't want us to sort of feel like if we lost six kids in the high school building, but two of them had graduated, we didn't lose them. They just, you know, when the numbers are subtle like that, it's just, I just thought it bears mentioning. Any questions? All righty, thanks Carly, and thanks Rich. Okay, B on new business is Mr. Ryan Ruggles. I will invite to the podium. This is a routine, rather customary function that we've got. He will outline for us our 2023, 2024 education options, and he will presumably take action on that when you're done with your discussion.
All right, thank you. Yes, so each year, I have to bring some question, I add is one in the summer, and then one in the winter. And the winter is our education options, so for Wisconsin Act 5, we require each year to notify parents of our school, our building, the park cards, and also, all of the education options that have been in the schools from the other available to our community. So with that, part of, part of me in that requirement is shared here at the board level. And then as soon as we do that, then we update our web getting as well and make this available for all of our community members and parents. So I'm just going to highlight a few of the changes that we've had from last year. You notice this is the same form that we create each year and we just update. And also, I'll just highlight a few of the changes that we made from the first draft that we shared on Friday, and we got some additional information here just this afternoon. So on that first page, the only change is to our public and private school options. So this year, we added Servant Bible Christian Academy as a second private school option within, also the Southern Colton Grounds. They're a new school that started operating last year, but because of that, it was the first year that we, this is the first year that we have to report them working with them. So we work with them with some of their students, and have already established a good relationship with them. As we get into the second page, most of those programs remain unchanged. The early college credit program, the Center College Now, U-Prenships, are programs that remain very strong here in Milton, a great opportunity for our students. The changes that we made from our first draft to the draft that's before you now are because of that special note at the way we buy. And if you remember that, we've had that special note at the bottom of this document for the last three years, notifying you that, hey, something's coming down the bike, and here it is. So in September of 2023, the Higher Learning Commission effective this fall, any transcripted credit or advanced standard credit, our staff members that are teaching the course will be required to hold a master's degree in that course this fall. So that will greatly affect the number of transcripted credits and advanced standard courses that we're going to be able to offer. Because of that, we went, we went back up into transcripted credit agreement courses and the advanced standard courses and took up some specific language, because we didn't want to speak to specific courses until we get into fall and we have a better handling of which programs we might be able to offer for transcripted credit. For instance, we have a staff member that will be retiring this year that is able to transfer credits for us in speech. With that retirement, that is going to be hard on for us to fill, and it will change many of the options that we will have for students for transcripted credit. The other change that we made from the first draft to the draft that you have today, we removed the U of U One High Program Partners in Education. That program was trying to be built similar to the Gavias Kosh Cap Program. There is dwindling, what does it say? Participation in that program in general throughout the area. We have struggled to staff that program. From my understanding, U of U One had the person that led that program leave, and they will not be continuing with that program. So we just dropped that information, so we took that off our educational offers.
What questions do we have for me?
That was a very thorough explanation, such that we don't have any, Mr. Ruggles.
Excellent. So, you know, I wanted to go fast, but, you know, my schwaiken comes up when I talk to you, so I won't be here.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2023-24 educational options as presented.
I'll second that. Thank you. Motion from Mike, seconded by John, to approve our education options for 2023, 2024. Questions? All in favor of approval, signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you, Mr. Ruggles. All right, that is the end of new business. Miscellaneous, A is our staffing report, which is included for you in board docs.
I move to approve the staffing report as presented.
I'll second that. Thank you. Motion from Rick, seconded by, I believe it was Dave. Is that correct? I was listening while I was reading, so we'll call it, we'll call it Dave. For the motion on the floor, I'm sorry. Are there any questions on the motion?
One quick comment that I want to make before the board votes on this, is we are getting into retirement year where especially certified staff will be looking at retirements. And on this one, we have retirements of three teachers, one admin assistant, and one administrator. So I wanted to be sure that the board members saw that. Kerry Bradley will be retiring, and wanted to update the board just really quickly on it, because Ryan Ruggles is also leaving, now is on a past staffing report. His position has been posted, and we're gathering applicants, and we have interviews coming up in early March, and with Kerry's retirement, we will be posting that position, getting, going on, hiring for that position, and the principals will be working on hiring for teacher and, and assistant positions in their, in their schools.
All right. Motion on the floor is to approve the staffing report. Questions? All in favor of approval, signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you. The staffing report is approved. Meeting dates, Rich?
We have a number of upcoming meetings. So we talked earlier about February 15th. This Wednesday is a joint HR and Finance Committee meeting. That's at 3:30 in the First Floor Conference Room. On February 22nd, we have a Benefits Advisory Group meeting at 4:15 here in the PDC. On March 1st, and I'm going through all the committee meetings first. On March 1st, we have another joint HR and Finance Committee meeting. That's at noon in the First Floor Conference Room. And then we have a whole date for a possible joint HR and Finance Committee meeting on March 8th at noon in the First Floor Conference Room. Those, those joint HR Finance Committee meetings are to continue the conversation about other post-employment benefits. Then we have our next two regularly rescheduled school board meetings, two weeks from tonight, on February 27th, at 6:30 here in the PDC. In March, we only have one board meeting, so that board meeting is on March 13th at 6:30 here in the PDC. The reason we only have one is because the second one would correspond with spring break. We have the community information sessions for the referendum, and anytime we have a quorum of the board attending those, we would post those. And so the two that we had shared earlier, February 20th, is at Mill High School in the Library and Media Center at 6:30, a week from, a week from tonight. And then on February 21st, a week from tomorrow, at Harmony in the Library and Media Center, also at 6:30. We do need to schedule a policy committee meeting. We're, we're working on some policies we'd like to get in, one more policy committee meeting before the board changes. And so we'll be working on that. And we looked at a possible date for a finance committee meeting, and put out the idea of either Wednesday, February 22nd, or February 23rd, for finance committee folks. Carly, you said you heard back from who on the 22nd?
I think the 22nd is working, or happening on.
Okay. I don't know if that works for you, Joe. I think we heard from Mike.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine.
Okay, so the finance committee meeting will be on February 22nd, from 11, starting at 11:00 AM.
And then, just to reiterate, I think Rich and I discussed, we'll notice those meetings as possible forum, just so we don't have an issue. And that way, if we get four board members that were recovered.
Board members that haven't gotten back to Carly on any of those information sessions that you're available or interested in, and if you can get ahold of her tomorrow, then she can get posted, the ones that need to get posted.
Did we say 11 o'clock for February 22nd?
Do you want to schedule a policy, or are you going to send something out?
We'll send something out.
Okay.
Not all we got for dates for the moment?
Ten hours.
Yeah, right? It's enough. I'm not suggesting we do more. I move adjourn. Second. Rick, seconded by Mike, call in favor.
Aye.
I didn't even ask for a pose. You are adjourned. You are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.